2025, located at 499 Plymouth Street, which happens to be Town Hall on the second floor in the Selectmen's Meeting Room. I also need to announce that the Planet Board meeting is being recorded by Area 58 and can be viewed on YouTube and Community Access Television. I still believe there's also a venue for it. I want to go off-script for a minute, and I want to acknowledge the unfortunate and unexpected passing of Bob Valerie, the town of Halifax's health agent. Someone who legitimately could wear the title of a very nice man. And he's going to definitely be missed. All right, let's talk about the agenda.
I'll make a motion to accept the agenda as presented.
A second?
Moved and seconded to approve the agenda. All those in favor?
Aye. Discussion? We have discussion?
Oh, sure.
Okay. We don't... I think we're going to talk about 318 Plymouth Street.
Yes, I was going to include that in the other business section.
Should we add that as anything?
We can. If you want to make a motion to add to...
And just think it was...
An update on 318.
Well, can we just put it under this... Is that the business, the same as discussions, basically?
Yeah, we can just say update on 318.
All right, update on 318. I make a motion to amend the agenda to include 318 Plymouth Street.
A second?
Moved and seconded to update the agenda under other business to... Excuse me, to update 318 Plymouth Street. All those in favors, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I believe it's unanimous, and we don't have to take roll call votes tonight. We'll have a full board.
Yay.
So, we need to now approve the agenda in total. So, we have a motion and we have a second to approve the agenda. Do we still have those?
Motion?
Yep.
Second?
As amended?
As amended. Moved and seconded to approve the agenda as amended. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimous. Moving on to our first appointment would be 539 Plymouth Street Site Plan Review. I believe you're ready.
Yep. Sorry, I'm a little overwhelmed. 539 Plymouth Street. I got the plan. Here's one. Yeah, so you guys can...
Do you want to show out electronically or no?
I think so. I...
So, this is one complete set. I saw you. I happened to see you in conservation this afternoon. Is that squared away, conservation?
No, it's paid on them. They already filed everything to CONCON just like wait. I think it's going to be November 4th, the meeting. It's already scheduled for November 4th. But I just want to get to you guys, so...
Can I just...
Paying in conservation, you know? And I talked to historical as well, and I think he sent something. And I already talked to him the other day. Show him everything.
Yeah, we're going to need to get something from everybody.
Yeah, okay.
And not at all, you know...
I think he said to me, "I was going to send today mail here."
Okay. I don't think she's gotten it yet.
No?
What?
The historical. It was historical you were referring to, right?
Yes.
Yeah. And then CONCON is meeting on the 4th, you said?
Yes. If you guys can prove me, pay it on them. If they say no, you know what I mean?
That's about 100 feet.
You know?
I think that's going to be a problem.
What'd you say about?
Have you talked... Oh, I'm sorry. I missed the part about you went to conservation and...
They're going to hear it on the 4th.
On the 4th? If you guys can look... We can be paid on conservation. Conservation say no, I can review with you guys, you know what I mean?
What I think I'm hearing is you would like to have us approve this pending the conservation.
On conservation, yes.
Well, we need it on that one.
Yeah, we've been kind of reluctant to do that.
We haven't been doing the process of doing that.
Well, I think even more so now because we don't currently have a building official.
I'm doing 300 square feet shed, 286.
Yeah, that's not a problem.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying, yeah.
That's not a problem. We're concerned with the whole site.
So, here's the...
Thank you.
And what I'm getting at is building official would be the one to issue a building permit. And where we don't have one...
Do we going to need to build a permit for the shed, the 300 square feet?
No, no.
Well, it's within the 100-foot buffer.
No, no, you're right. You're not going to need a permit for the shed because it's under 200 square. How big is it?
300, 286.
You will need a permit.
But what I don't need a permit?
Commercial, I believe, is... It's kind of crazy.
Because I heard 300. I heard 300, that's why I did 286.
No, unless it's changed recently. It used to be that residential was 200, but commercial was 120, I think. Unless it's been changed recently. And that's what I'm saying. We don't have a building inspector here. We're not currently doing it.
Well, we also have to stay within the process, in my opinion, that if we say to one person that we can't approve it until conservation is, we really can't like keep going back and forth for different applicants.
Yeah, and included in that is the fact that, you know, whether it needs any stormwater management or not, we're going to need something from them to tell us that the stormwater management is addressed. And it looks like it is, but...
Yeah, they've got a system right here.
Yeah, but...
But then we also have to see whether or not they're going to be okay with placement on things.
Yeah.
Because some of this... You aren't going to pave this. You were going to do...
It's not paved. It's going to be crushed on.
I'm just making sure.
Yes, it's going to be crushed on.
But they've still got some control in there, so...
Where is the sidewalk control on this? Somewhere in there?
It's right here.
It's right there.
It's right there, sidewalk.
No, I meant the crosswalk. The signal light.
It's right here.
Yeah, it's right here.
We should have it on then. We need everything within 300 feet on the map and labeled as who it is, you know? If we have this, but we don't have across the street, that's 300 feet.
Is this curb cut there already, or is that...
It's right here.
It's pre-existing?
Yeah. It's right here.
So, when you get deliveries for the mulch and the compost and the lawn, are the delivery trucks that are bringing it in to sell the product?
They can come in straight there.
Okay.
How they getting out?
Let me ask a question, okay? Is this the only egress that you have in and out of the property?
Yes.
So, customers and deliveries will both be coming in at the same time?
Are the trucks going to be able to turn around and come out, or they're going to have to back out on the 106?
No, they'll be able to come in. We're going to have a space here. We're going to have enough space here inside.
You have a tree to be removed in the access that you said is already there?
Yeah, because it's already tucked on the street, but the tree isn't appropriate.
Got you.
To make that center, I needed to take this tree out and this tree out so that... Because right now, it's kind of on the like... The entrance there be.
It's not going to have a lot of room. I need to turn the truck around.
If I need to open more of this space as well, you know what I mean? What can do down here, but I think we're going to have enough space here.
Are you having... What type of trucks? 10-wheelers? Not bringing... Not bringing a tractor? Not bringing...
No, 10-wheelers.
So, the 10-wheelers or triaxle?
Yeah.
Why do you have such a big curb in here? So, you can put...
Yeah, because I think I can have a little bit more space here.
That's 100 foot right here.
Yeah, but I think this is why we're going to conservation to get this buffer to be...
Yeah, but if you're going to make it bigger for the turning around, you're going further into the buffer. And I think that's one of the things that would need to happen. You can't turn trucks around in there.
Is that a 50-foot buffer or 100-foot?
It says 100. Here's the 50 back here.
I mean, how many feet is... So, we have 22...
I think it says 62.
Oh, thank you.
We have 60 foot from here to here, 62. You know what I mean? It's not small. That place, you know what I mean? We can go there and measure everything, but...
Maybe it's tight. What's the difference between here and there?
40 feet from here to there. See that one? So, it's a difference, right?
That's why I was asking. Can we get the measurement from here to there?
Here's the other question, and we didn't send this out for any kind of review.
Well, we just got it, right?
Yeah, this is the first time we've seen a plan, right? So, we're going to have to get some review.
So, Danielle?
What's up?
Hey, so this plan from Albach Engineering for 539 Plymouth Street, we got it on September 30th, and that automatically goes out to all the other boards with that system?
Yes.
Maybe we can remind them to send in some comments by our next meeting? Is there a way that we can just email the departments and see if we can get comments?
They should be, like I said the other day, there should be an expiration date on it for them already, which gives them, I believe, it's 30 days to comment. And after the 30 days are up, it'll automatically push it through.
I'd definitely like to see Mr. Haywood's opinion of this, as well as the police chief about, you know, the access of delivery trucks and customizing stuff going in there. I'd be really interested to hearing their thoughts on that. That's tight.
I would agree with you, but...
Yeah, I...
Especially with the traffic going in and out of the post office. It's already insane.
And then the radius of a fire truck?
Yeah, that's... Yeah. Yeah, we want the fire chief to look at this.
Maybe it would be a good idea to just send a reminder out to make sure that they send us comments?
Well, when did we... It's David...
September 30th, so it's been 18 days.
When did we get it? Danielle, when did we get the plan?
I'm looking right now. Please just bear with me a second because my laptop's a little finicky, all right?
Sure thing.
Oh, right, because we might not have got it.
Yeah.
Oh, 10:13. October 14th.
Okay, so if that's when it's stamped in...
So, 30 days from that.
Everyone's got 30 days to respond?
So, that is... Yeah, so in November, we have... Which means that he'll be seeing...
It looks like this came in five months ago, April 16th.
Yeah, just we'd be putting in it all.
Oh, you mean the original?
Yeah, what are you asking for, the plans?
The one that he just handed us. You have it uploaded in this system, or somehow the system has it uploaded into the computer here for our files. We have it on the screen. Do you want me to share screen with you?
No, it's all right. I got it over here.
Says 10:14. It's stamped on.
You're saying his application came in at that time, right, Danielle?
Yes.
Okay, yeah. We were really kind of referring to the plan, but it's stamped in October 14th. So, if we actually got it on the 14th and it went out on the 14th, we wouldn't necessarily have a deadline of return comments until the 14th of November. Does that sound right?
I think I give her...
Well, maybe go ahead and see. I don't know if the system's designed like that every time I upload something new.
I give her another one.
We're still working things in there, but let me just take a look real quick.
Because I think at the original filing, I don't think we had plans.
Nothing like that.
No. Hand draw one.
Yeah.
I give her another one. It's smaller than this one the other day, about maybe a week, I think.
Okay, yeah, that'd be the...
That'd be the 14th.
That'd be the 14th.
Yeah, let me see, yeah. 14 before 12? No, it's 16, 12 days ago. And I've been here longer than that.
Well, I don't know. This got stamped in... Well, whenever she sent it out. In any event, even if it was beginning of last week, we're still looking at a month from that date for everyone to return any commentary.
Yeah.
And, you know...
Finally, because I have a space back here. If I need to open more space back here, I will open more space so trucks can flip it over. With this, all this space here is commercial back here. I need to change anything from here to here, I will. If that's make it easy, I'll make this whole flip.
You might need a turn.
Yeah, I make this whole turn space. So, as a you, you know what I mean? It's just eat my money, but I will do this, you know what I mean? This is what you guys want.
Is this tree back here, or is this a tree?
No, you know, trees are clear. It's so spacey. It's commercial.
Yeah, yeah, I understand. I understand.
I can make a street like...
We might need to put in a little full sack for a turn. It's not what we want, but the front of it's got it.
Yeah, but...
Yeah.
Like for this, we have to do it, we do it, you know what I mean? I, you know? Like if I have to do it like, you know what I mean, like nice, like...
I think he's going to have to.
Yeah.
I don't see how anyone's going to turn around.
And if you're going to do that, maybe you'd have to move this out a hundred and come back in here.
Yeah, that's fine. Maybe I move this and put here, you know, so I get more space.
That would be better.
Oh, yeah.
All right, and maybe even reconfigure the...
Yeah, no, I don't think so. Because all the water, it's...
It's running that way?
How the land is there. He has to keep this. But we can open more here, then I can change this to here, you know what I mean?
Well, here's the... Yeah. Outside the 100, which is...
Yeah.
That helps with conservation.
Whatever's going to make it easier for me to get this one. This one was here, you know?
Yeah, well... I'm looking at this and I'm going, "This is going to take a little longer." Because we're going to wait for some commentary from everybody. And then if you have to make some changes, you're going to have to get them changed on the plan and come back again.
What do you think I should do then?
Well, you're going to have to wait at least until...
Wait then.
Or if you want to, you know, take it...
No, I'll wait. I'll wait. We're getting it anyway.
Or take it individually to some of the other boards if you want to go see the fire chief.
Do we wait till we give that...
Sam, where are you going for conservation?
I'm going on November 4th.
Okay, I think we have a meeting on November 6th, so I can try and have it all wrapped up by that date.
Yeah.
If you'd like.
Yeah, that's better. Because that way, if I have to re-figure this whole thing, I'll re-figure the whole thing.
Yeah, well, yeah, well, that's what I'm trying to suggest to you is you might want to talk to some of the people most involved in this.
Who's the people I want?
Well, you had a comment about the place and/or highway. You should talk to them.
And the fire has seen...
And fire.
Well, that's what the whole, you know, like you mean to see what he should do to change it?
Yeah, exactly. Should we just peer review all of them?
I mean, like, that's the whole reason we get comments. We really shouldn't get comments during here so that we can...
Yeah, but our protocol is to send it out to a peer review engineer. If they look at it, give us their comment, and you can talk to them and make the changes before it comes back. And then send them out again and make sure that they're happy with what they get. As opposed to keep doing it.
How much frontage is there? I don't see a measurement on the frontage.
Yeah, that has to be on the plan.
Is that what you guys are looking at?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yeah. Oh, wait a minute. There's another page, Chris.
That makes sense existing.
Yeah, there's a page.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Oh, okay.
This is what we're looking at.
Yeah, there's some...
Maybe the front is here.
Thank you, please.
100 feet?
I don't see a frontage.
It's more than 100, a little bit.
I don't see it. I don't see the number.
But...
You can get that adjusted onto the plan. That would be good.
It's not even on the... Still another page. Just one more page.
Because I think Cease has got one of those making...
No.
Ah, yeah.
Looks like it's right here.
Jamie, we're not hiding this from you. No, it's here. It's just walked up to see.
I'm sorry. What did you ask?
I think it says 100 over here.
We can get on scale.
But can you see with this in?
Oh, it says 61 by 2.
No, but here on this, yeah, right here. 61 by 2, I think is the entrance, about 100 feet from this.
So, that's one of the measurements of like the drive there, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
Let me look.
It's easier to see.
60 by 2, is that what you're saying? Yeah, 60 by 2.
Yep.
That's not the frontage though.
Okay, okay.
The frontage would have, yeah. And it would have a, you know, a measurement there.
Okay.
Here's the other question. Do we send it out for review?
Well, we can, and then he'll look at all the bylaws and send it back.
Yeah, well, that's getting... I mean, we make anyone else do it.
We have to. We have to anyway. Every site plan goes to peer review.
Yeah.
But do we have a revolving account up?
No, I'm sure we don't.
So, we'll need you to make a revolving account so that we can have our engineer to... Or not our engineer, but an engineer do a peer review using our bylaws and looking at your plan and making comments based on his knowledge.
I think what we could ask, if we have this electronically especially, we could have Sam, he'll send a copy to a review engineer and ask him for a quote.
Yeah, and then get an account up.
Yeah, that way we know so we're not over...
No, it has to be there. I'll measure them 150 feet approximately of frontage, you know?
Which would be right, because when that got subdivided...
Yeah, because I think you got 20 feet, the entrance 40, something like that on the entrance.
They subdivided that out when they put it up. From the Bosworths.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Yeah, 60, yeah.
I remember that somewhere.
Yeah, I think something like that.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's open, but... I can call him tomorrow and make sure he put the frontage in there, you know what I mean?
Well, you might need to make other changes too, so you might want to... I'm not telling you how to do this, but...
No, you have to tell me because I don't...
Well, I'm going to say you might want to hold off until you get some more feedback. So, you have to keep doing plan upon plan upon plan.
Yeah.
Yeah, and it costs you money every time you go to your engineer to redo it. You like to give it to them. Here, go make all these changes.
All at once.
All at once, you done with it.
Yeah, that's...
I agree.
How I'd want to do it, but... Because I think this is a little bit problematic, especially if these are all full. I mean, I suppose you could back up into the parking spots if there wasn't anybody in the parking spots.
Right.
If he's got the land up top, he might want to...
Yeah, I might go use it, especially where it's clear. I mean, you're going to have to take out this, you know...
It's nothing there.
Luminant topsoil, but not subsoil, but...
And he'll... Yeah, I mean, yeah. And he'll... We'll have to have a notation on how many employees the parking bylaw are on here. So, yeah, I make a motion to send this out to peer engineering.
I think while you're waiting to go and get comments from everybody else... Danielle, do we have this electronically?
Yes, I have it up on my screen.
Yes, okay, yes, we do. So, we could send it out... I mean, I'm assuming we'd want to use Pat Brennan, is that...
Well, who are the other choices?
Not really. I mean, unless we put it out the bid or something. We should do that yearly anyway, but I think for the time being, I think Pat's... I have no problem with Pat looking at this, unless someone has a concern. We could send it off to Pat and get a quote of what he would want to do to do the review work. That way you know what it's going to cost.
And then you'll have to come into the Town Hall and set up a revolving account so that... And put some money in to have the engineering peer reviewed.
Yeah, I think Danielle can probably direct you...
I paid that today for the...
CONCON?
Yes.
Who's doing the peer engineering for the CONCON, do you know?
It's probably...
Is this a copy or is this his? Is this his copy or our copy?
He's presenting it to us. All right, do we have... What do we have for a timeframe? Do we need an extension?
So, we have... He is 11:15 2025. So, we have two meetings? No, we have one meeting. So, we have one more meeting.
Yeah, okay, so we can extend it. But don't forget, if it starts getting late, you want to ask for an extension before the next meeting.
Now, hold on. I'm going to see the conservation afford.
Yeah?
Yes, and we meet the 6th, right?
Yeah.
Next meeting is the 6th?
Yeah.
And the town has until 11:13 to get the comments on?
What about the conservation and the people's going to look at this for conservation?
Yeah, you might be okay. They may be able to...
That's what I'm saying.
Get you squared away for CONCON.
Yes, but they're still going to get squared away for you guys.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we should start that process.
I know it's a hard process. I...
Yeah, I have to go that, this other process, true.
Well, if he didn't have conservation on the land, any buffer zones on the land, then he wouldn't have to be going to conservation. But now you do have 150-foot buffers on that land, so that's why you're going to conservation.
If conservation prove me at the 4th, doesn't matter. We still have to go through review on this.
Yes, because you have stormwater management too. You've got to take some...
I think conservation's doing nice.
Yeah, they're going to look at that too, but that's part of the site plan, and we have to review it as well.
Okay, because that's what I paid them to do, 700, to check the storm.
So, I'm hoping that it's the same engineer because that'll help.
Oh, I see. Okay.
You'll have to do it anyways, even like say you didn't have conservation. You'd have to do it with us for all of the other bylaws, like radiuses and things like that.
I know it's disturbing, but it is what it is.
It's a way to protect us and the town, so...
100%.
Yeah.
And this is the first time we've seen a full plan, so...
So, make them...
And we've got until, what, sometime in November before we even get comments back?
13th.
Yeah, 15th.
Yeah, she's...
Then the 13th, that means the 6th. Why are you... Yeah, we're going to keep to the 6th to come back, but maybe you're not going to get the comms by the 6th anyways?
Danielle said that she was going to try to get them from all the boards for you to help you out.
Okay, then if we get that, that'll help because then that way we know...
Yeah.
Yeah.
Sounds good.
Yeah, but then we're still going to have to get some feedback from the review engineer with any changes that whoever gives this feedback wants to put on the plan. So, you know, it's not likely you're going to be squared away on the 6th, I don't believe.
Yeah.
So, you might want to ask for an extension anyway.
That's what I'm saying, yeah.
Just, but by this, before the 6th, if it doesn't look like you're coming in that night, at least see Danielle and ask for an extension.
Yeah.
Okay?
Before the 6th because we...
Yeah, or on the... Yeah, on the 6th, the day of the 6th, but before the meeting.
Yeah. Okay.
All right, we'll put you on the agenda for the 6th anyway, even if you're not coming in, just to have it covered.
Absolutely.
It's not reasonable to everybody.
Do you want a motion to send it to peer engineering?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion to send 539 Plymouth Street, PSPR 25-3 to peer engineering with PGV engineering.
Second?
Did you want to just do it for the quote, or do you want to have it done?
Oh, are you going to want to have it done, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, I said it, but you give me a quote, correct?
Yeah, we're going to try to get you a quote, but we're going to have to have you do it.
Yeah.
Right, so...
Okay, so you want me to amend to just quote it?
No, I don't think so.
No, because it's still going to go.
You're going to want us to peer engineer it, right?
Yeah.
But we'll tell you how much it's going to be.
He doesn't really want us to, but we want to.
We have to.
Yeah, we have to. Let's just say that.
When you send it, you call me, you guys, somebody will tell me how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
That's fine, but you guys can send it.
So, we have a motion to send PSPR 25-3 to review. Do I have a second for that?
Second.
We have a motion to send PSPR-25-3 and a second to send to peer review engineer. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I hear that is unanimous. Thank you. Keep in mind, if it's going to go past the 6th, you want to get an extension. You'll have to ask for it.
I might talk to Kyle tomorrow. Might go there tomorrow, person, talk to him, see if we can come back at the site and measure like where the beam is going to be, where the tree is going to be. So, it's probably going to be some type of law, how much space I need to flip the cars. You know what I mean? If it is, I'll make it, and I'll move. Maybe I move all the trees to the back.
I think...
Like, you see the trees we have on that side? I might move it to the back. Then I have that all open.
Yeah, you should get some feedback from some of the people involved in this, in particular the fire department.
I'll move the fire department.
Because if he has to, you know, you've got mulch on fire out there, and he has to get a truck in there, he wants to be able to maneuver out there and get around it and turn around and get out.
Yeah, but if I take this...
Yeah, take the plan.
No, I can keep this with you. If I take this here, this whole thing here on this front, I see how I have this, and I don't leave nothing here, just be open. So, now I got space.
Yeah, well, you can talk to your...
Yes, this one, yeah.
Talk to your engineer and tell him to start looking at everything that's going to be required on this lot. But we're still going to get feedback from everybody.
Yep.
And you might want to reach out to them anyway.
I will.
All right, I'm not telling you to do that. I'm just suggesting you...
It's kind of an idea, yeah. I appreciate it.
So, we're going to put you on the agenda for the 6th. And if it doesn't... So, we're gonna put you on the agenda for the sixth, and if, if it doesn't look like you're gonna have anything ready for the sixth, make sure that you come in and ask for an extension, before the, the end of the day, on the sixth, okay? Because it's up to you to ask for the extension, and if you don't ask.
It's bad.
You don't get it, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
Alrighty.
You're getting closer, now you have the plan.
Yeah.
Yeah. Alrighty, moving right along, a continuation of PSPR twenty-five dash four, five ninety Mon Ponce Street, site plan review, I think I saw somebody here.
Is that late?
Announce who you are, please.
Pat, five ninety-one Mon Ponce.
Thank you.
So, it's basically the same site plan, we only changed a few things.
I was thinking of a question to ask you this afternoon, and so, if you leave it in the same configuration, you're not going to seat on a deck.
Yeah, well, how about?
You're looking at fifty seats, and two, two seats per spot, twenty-five spots, four employees, two spots, does that include the coffee shop too?
So, the coffee shop will be closed when it's events at night, or if it's like during the day on the weekend, coffee shop will be closed.
Yeah, that, that was a concern I saw immediately, and I, that would end up, I believe, I would recommend that that be, if this comes to fruition, a stipulation in the, in the approval that the event venue would not be operating at the same time as the coffee shop was open and operating, because that will defeat your parking situation.
Are you gonna have any seating in the coffee shop?
Yeah, so the seating in the coffee shop was shown prior, but it would only be during the day and then would be closed.
Yeah, and I don't think, didn't even come close to twenty, twenty.
No, I think it was only fifteen, it's only fifteen, twelve to fifteen seats in there. So, the occupancy of the building would be fifty.
Right, totally.
What is this red on the roof?
I'm axing it out, because everybody says we were gonna get the plans done, a hundred percent done.
Yeah.
But he sent those late last night, and I redaxed the roof, because I'm not doing, there's no roof on the deck.
But you are doing the deck.
Yes. Because the deck's approved by conservation, a roof on the deck is not a roof.
So, it's, the deck is not gonna be enclosed?
Not enclosed.
I think.
Because I don't wanna go back, not the.
Maybe you should show a seating chart on a different plan with this, and, and show what, what it would look like during the day, or during, sorry, whenever the coffee shop is open.
Okay.
Yeah, just so we can determine that.
Yeah, I, I mean, there's, there's a seating plan on the portal, it's from the last meeting.
Yeah, but it should, it should be shown in the plan.
Is it in here anymore?
No.
So, without the roof on it, what is gonna be around the outside of the deck?
It's just a random cable ribbon.
A cable ribbon?
Well, that's all gonna be to code it.
Yep.
It'll look nice.
Yeah, because the, the prior building commissioner had no problems with it, and then he saw the seating outside, so then he changed his mind, not changed his mind, he went by the bylaws. So, we went back to not enclosing the deck, no seating out there.
Okay, so that would also be a stipulation. So, we're not talking about any valet parking or any of that, so there's none of that to be dealing with, thankfully, because that could have been a little bit of a bear as well.
Have we sent this out to comments for any other boards?
I thought we did that, didn't we?
Yeah, so, it's, it's the original comments, because it's the original site plan.
We don't have the full plan, like, commented on by everybody, right? Because it's been changing all along, I don't know if that matters to anybody, but.
Well, the site isn't changing.
And they haven't changed the parking, or just.
I haven't changed this, I haven't changed the site at all.
It's just the use.
So, who's been on, who's been off?
Yeah.
So, basically, it goes back to the original site plan.
Okay.
We just dropped the occupancy.
Got you.
Yeah, as far as the occupancy in the coffee shop goes, that's gonna.
It's basically the building itself, fifty occupants, four floors, it's like the maximum.
But, but even in the coffee shop, you, you wouldn't necessarily get fifty people in there anyway, because the, 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 the schedule of seating versus whatever is, also dictates how many people can have in the coffee shop, and may not even come anywhere near fifty, I'm just looking at it.
If it's fifty people, it's practically the coffee shop.
So, park. So, we need that number?
You're not putting in an elevator, right?
Um, we actually have to, with the second floor access.
Oh, it is a second floor, that's right. Yeah, you're gonna, you're gonna have to, you're gonna, yeah. You're gonna have to take care of handicapped accessibility.
But that would be with building, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
I mean, you're showing it on the plan, which is what you needed to do. And again, stipulation that there would be no, no service of any kind on the deck.
No seating and service, or just?
You could seat out there, but you couldn't serve it.
Sorry about that.
What does the technically mean?
Sorry?
What does that technically mean?
That means you can sit people out there.
They can take their food and take their drink and go out and sit out there.
Oh, okay.
But, but you can't have a waitress go out there and, and serve food or drinks.
Yeah.
Yeah, because we had even talked about the, the possibility of a, of a portable bar not ever happening out there.
And, and we're gonna limit you to fifty people, so it isn't like fifty people inside and fifty people outside, okay? Just, just making sure we're all the same people.
For the entire lot.
Yes.
Plus four employees.
Right. I think that ended up being, what, twenty-seven parking spots?
Yeah, it's twenty-seven, so twenty-five for fifty seats.
And two for the employees, yeah.
Yeah.
And four employees is realistic for the few fifty people.
Yeah. Because it's not like we have a full kitchen, it's just.
Yeah, right, right, exactly, it's gonna be catered, set up and abandoned.
In the coffee shop, it's gonna be catered muffins and things like that as well, or?
Yeah, we're not doing, we're doing a very, not like a, trying to think of a local, maybe Sandy's Coffee Corner.
Are you gonna do donuts and stuff?
Yeah. Yeah, but you're not baking, you're, you're bringing in.
Are you gonna get really good donuts?
That's, that's, you can get it in the bag.
Uh, so, but never mind, not Sandy's, do you know Paul and Norwell, or like Hanover, similar?
Really good cinnamon raisin bagels, just saying.
Is that a condition?
Yes, condition.
Oh, my God.
No service provided on the deck.
So, I, I'll be alright with the things that we have stipulated, and then on the plans that we receive, like, back that we can sign, having the roof taken off that you showed us tonight with the red, and showing us the seating within the coffee shop.
Because there are basically two different seating plans, so like one for events, and then one for when coffee shops open.
Yeah. Upstairs, is there gonna be any furniture, or is it just gonna be like fun dance for us?
Just wide open.
Okay. And no bar up there or anything like that?
No.
Just to clarify for me, the coffee shop, your seating is gonna be on the coffee shop side, right? You're not gonna open up the event side for coffee shop seating?
So, we, I, so I brought up two different seating plans, because there might be actually three.
Okay.
Because if they don't do events, say they don't have a rented on that side, then the idea would be to open it up and then do like small, like.
Classes?
No, not classes, there's this place in Franklin, and they do like, I think it's margaritas on like Wednesday night or something, but it's like small. So, then the coffee bar would turn into a bar.
Well, which brings up an interesting question, you know, as, as opposed to an event license for liquor, are we looking for a full liquor license, or? Okay, is there one available? Okay, alright, that's not necessarily our issue, but.
You could have like open music nights too, right?
Correct. Open mic night, fifty people maximum? I just wanna make sure we get that in there, that's all.
So, what about like any classes on the second floor?
Classes, pop-up shops, stuff like that. The fifty people in the one area is only for like small events.
Yeah. Or like vomits those or something?
Yeah.
Okay. With the coffee shop plans and the roof off the plans, then, um, good.
Could that be?
With the other stipulations.
Yeah, and the other stipulations.
Anybody else, really, you?
Is this all sprinkled?
No.
Seventy-five hundred square feet, I don't think you're coming even close to that.
No.
I mean, sometimes the occupancy determines it, but I'm sure the fire department's gonna require you to put a system, you have to have a monitored system.
What do you think, Jamie?
I like it.
Yeah, I think it works.
Yeah, I think it works. If he's done, can we ask him?
Bruce?
I'm, I'm fine.
Okay. I'm gonna make a motion.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, I'm going to make, and I'm gonna just be specific in the whole entire thing, so.
I'll put a couple of things there. I mean, you can put your, provide a plan, showing the roof off, and, you know.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna do.
Yeah, put those, but I wanna make sure we, uh.
Okay.
Maximum market can see with fifty, plus four employees.
Yeah, no roof.
The only thing, the other thing they don't see on here, you might wanna consider, you're gonna have to mark the handicap parking spots.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, I got, I got.
Oh, that's one, that's one.
Leave it up front.
Okay, the, the building inspector should make you mark on the ground and assign, so, okay, that would be something that.
That's by code though, too.
Yeah.
Right, did you have something that you wanted to stipulate besides the cinnamon raisin bagels?
As a condition mentioned that it would say right on it as a condition, there is no valet, which they said they.
Okay, so I was gonna repeat all of this stuff, does that work?
Right.
And then add the stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
There'd be no service on the deck.
Tom?
Yep.
Um, I was just looking at the minutes from the last meeting, and it looks like the building inspector recommended that any kind of seating on the deck be fully enclosed. So, I don't know if that's something you wanna take a look at, or.
Any kind of seating, I mean, I, obviously in the winter months, I mean, you wouldn't be going here, but I don't, I don't.
That's why I asked, I didn't wanna ask, open a can of worms, but he said, he wouldn't give an answer if we had seating outside, he wouldn't give an answer if they took the food outside.
Yeah, I, I.
If that's considered the open air.
Yeah, I think, that's how I remember his commentary.
That's exactly how I remember.
He said, as long as there was no service outside, if you're taking something outside, which I liken to taco lack, so, yeah.
Yeah, or like Rodney's, or.
Yeah, 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 I, I, I don't think that's an issue for us.
Really, if Carson can buy a sandwich and go sit outside in the parking lot, what's the difference of him sitting on the deck or the back lawn?
When I go to McDonald's, I eat in the car, I don't know.
You go to McDonald's?
You're in violation, buddy.
Or between cinnamon bagels and McDonald's.
What do you have for conditions over there, Amy?
Just with breakfast.
I think, as long as I hit all, hit the ones I have here.
No service seating on the deck, no bar outside, max fifty people for the, for the entire place lot.
Plus four employees.
Because of the outside comment, plus four employees, twenty-seven parking spots, um, please have a page showing the tables in the coffee shop and noted, and note occupancy, um.
And then no valet.
And the removal.
Yeah, that's gonna be on here, removal of the roof on the plan. I just have that on the plan.
Come on, we can come up with some more conditions.
Wasn't, wasn't, wasn't that it's strictly catered, there's no, uh.
Yeah, that'll be on here.
That's on there too.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry.
Don't be sorry.
Should've let you finish the whole thing, but.
No, it's okay, I understand.
Events can't be.
Building any, so.
Going on while the coffee shop is open?
I'm sorry?
The vent, no events while the coffee shop is going.
I have a question, not actually.
Okay.
We can have a vent as long as it's like below fifty people in the building, correct? Like, you could have the coffee shop open, then you could have, say you wanted to have like a meeting upstairs with ten people.
Well, then the maximum occupancy of fifty would cover that.
Yes, just fifty, okay.
That makes sense.
Yeah, yeah, that does make sense.
I'm, I'm okay with that.
So, we just have to have a pocket on the building that says max, max occupancy of fifty?
Yeah, well, when you get your certificate of occupancy, the building official should give you a certificate of inspection, the maximum occupancy listed, so.
Okay, so, should, do you want a stipulation on there, no events at the same time the coffee shop is open, right? Because that kinda, that kinda.
We've talked about it. We've got it covered with the maximum of fifty.
Okay, cool. Alright, so, I'll make a motion, and I'm gonna use that plan, right? Um, I'm gonna make a motion to accept OE dash four one five two plan for five ninety Plymouth Street.
Mon Ponce.
Oh, jeez, I'm sorry, we've been saying Plymouth Street, five ninety Mon Ponce Street, sorry.
That's okay.
Um, I'm looking for a date on this.
I think it's three seventeen.
Three fourteen, twenty twenty-five. Yeah, with the conditions of stipulations of no seating on the deck, no exterior bar.
No service on the deck.
No service.
No service on the deck, max fifty people on the entire lot, plus four employees, twenty-seven parking spots, two handicap. Remove the roof that's on the current layout of, um, plan that you handed in tonight.
Of the deck.
Of the deck, so the roof off that deck, good point, um, please have all the tables laid out on another plan for the coffee shop and have it noted occupancy on that side by the building, with help from building, um.
No valet.
And, and yes, I'm getting on to this one, thank you, all events to be catered, seating of fifty will only be for special events, coffee shop to be closed during special events deck will remain open and have no sales outside, sorry, some of these are repeating, but, and no valet, to be specifically noted on the plan.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
Yeah, um, it's a movement second to what Amy just read.
Whatever you just said.
It's all written here.
And, and where this is a site plan approval, I'm gonna ask for a roll call board.
Okay.
Jamie Walsh?
Yes.
Bruce Sylvester?
Yes.
Brooke Gainer?
Yes.
Tom Milius, myself, yes, Amy Truitt?
Yes.
Sounds unanimous today.
Good job.
I'd also like a motion to allow the chair to sign for the board, sign the letter.
I would actually like to review this, where it's so expensive, like the letter. I would actually like to review this where it's so extensive, like the letter written.
That's fine. Well, that won't happen till the next meeting, but it's been approved. Yeah, so, but you need to provide that plan so that we can sign the letter and sign the plan at the same time.
So can I put it in the portal?
We're gonna need a hard copy.
Yeah, we're gonna need a hard copy so we can put in this.
If you want to drop it off or do I have to come to the next meeting?
You can drop it off.
Just drop it off.
Yeah, you don't have to be here.
And I have a question, it's off topic. What's the, is there a new, new mailing commissioner or no?
Uh, my understanding is that somebody has agreed to, uh, work on an interim part-time basis, uh, starting tomorrow or Monday. So there will be somebody, I believe it's the current building inspector in the town of Carr.
Okay.
So somebody at least from the area. Who's familiar with the town administrator, so that's a plausible, but that's real.
Alright. You guys wanna keep those?
I don't, I don't need all of them.
We should have at least one copy, I don't know whether you're on.
Good luck.
What are you keeping? You keeping one here?
This one should be in the file. I'm gonna keep mine.
This is, uh-
Do you want to keep that?
No.
This should go in the file. Do you want to write the other things that said on it?
Do you want me to just, I'll drop it off re-typed with the added items, alright?
I'm sorry?
I'll drop it off re-typed with the added items?
Yeah.
Okay.
Good.
Thank you.
Alright.
Congrats, Matt.
You look like you have a question over there.
It's gonna be exciting.
I can imagine. It's a hundred sixty-two furniture.
Okay.
Always gonna be open, but I'll have them put it in. I just want to let you guys know.
Yeah.
And I talked to the guy we're doing, we're not gonna bring the type of chairs in. It's gonna be smaller chocolate tryouts, that's it. But then we can-
Yeah, yeah.
Cause I'm gonna remove my other place. Just, you know what I mean, I just want to let you guys know.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, I'm gonna take something out of order here, if everybody's okay with that. Under other business, an update for three-eighteen Plymouth Street. Mr. Alger, do you have an update?
Um, Tom, three-twenty Plymouth Street. Uh, so as far as the, uh, the, the encroachment, that's the question. Um, the encroachment still exists. Uh, there's been some delivery of, uh, cement blocks. Um, but nothing has been, uh, put together, so the, the encroachment is still there, even though he had agreed that tonight would be his, he'd have it all resolved.
Just for your information, I had a conversation with Tracy White. Right, that's, I'm trying to keep them all straight with so many going on. Uh, I, I, cause I wanted to follow up, cause I assumed you'd come in tonight. So I reached out, um, so I'm just letting everybody know. He indicated that, uh, one of the questions I had was to make sure that you folks were okay with the blocks that we're gonna use. And he indicated that you had okayed the blocks, is that?
Why okayed the blocks as they are on the plan that he showed me?
But, okay.
But I haven't seen the blocks themselves.
Okay, see, I kind of got the impression that you had seen the blocks as well. He said they were particularly attractive for whatever that's worth. Uh, so I asked him, you know, where they were at in terms of getting the completed as per, you know, we had discussions on it. And he said they've got the base almost done, and the base really is the hard part, cause that's gotta be leveled and even so that you can, you know, the blocks going quick once you start with something that's okay. Uh, he indicated to me, and I don't know if this is any conversation you've had with him.
I, I haven't had any conversation. He doesn't communicate.
He, he said, the, the weather set him back a little bit. His plan was to have it loomed and seeded by the end, no later than the end of next week. Um, but I, I, I got the impression that you guys were okay with the block too. The, the block, cause that was part of the stipulation, I believe, that you want to prove the, the block. So, um, I have to reach out to him if everybody's okay with that again, and just say, hey, you know, before you be putting those blocks up.
Did we, um-
But he got them all delivered, I believe.
I, he has a bunch of blocks up there, um, but what I don't want to have happen is next Thursday comes and, ah, I just didn't get around to it, you know, and then it just goes into-
Yeah, it keeps going. I, I, I think, I think the original delay was waiting for the blocks, and I'm not trying to defend them, I'm just trying to reiterate, but I remember, um-
I remember that.
What's our role in this? Like what could we actually do if he doesn't finish by the end of next week?
Yeah, see, that's where it gets tricky. I mean, we could, uh, I mean, I don't want to say it's a civil matter, but technically it is.
Well, I have, I have my-
Yeah, no, yeah, I understand. I mean, technically it would be something civil between then.
Yeah.
Uh, we could put whatever pressure we could put from the board. Um, it, it's really dicey. We'd have to reach out to council.
Wouldn't-
To see what authority-
Wouldn't the decision letter help the building inspector, even though he is going to be the part-time building inspector, help him deal with it?
Oh, certainly. Yeah, the enforcement officer. In terms of the wall itself, but the, the encroachment is a different matter.
Yeah, the encroachment is the big issue.
Yeah, right, right, yeah, yeah. The wall's one thing, the encroachment is the problem.
And as your attorney said, stated at, at the site before our, our last meeting, be a little reasonable, you know, we've had four days of torrential rains that-
That's true.
You know, that's gonna slow things down. It's not unreasonable to, you know, knowing that the order is in, sometimes it takes a week and a half, sometimes it takes two. And your own attorney said the same thing, like, you know.
Right. But I think my-
It's not unreasonable to assume that, it's being worked on, everybody's, I think, doing the best that they can with what they have. I don't, I don't see any, any active prolonged drag-out thing for, for a cement, uh, for a block wall and- And it only made sense to me standing there that without the wall up there, how are you gonna fill in loom and seed it? Without the wall there, the loom would just spread out and nothing happened. And his own attorney said, that's not unreasonable. Let's wait till we get it in. The block will go in, the loom will go in, the seed will go in, and we'll get this all, all handled.
But watching the thing is they committed to a timetable.
They did, yeah.
And, and they shouldn't have. I, I know that they wanted to end the, uh, the ongoing conflict. I, I, I'm more concerned to be honest with you right now, where the stipulation was that the Algerists, um, you know, looked at the blocks and said they were okay with it. Now, on the site, when we were looking at the plan, I remember you commented that they, they looked okay. And I don't know if he went with that or not, but if that's gonna be a problem, that's a whole, of course, of a different color, if it will, right?
I don't know, and Amy, Kirk, me for wrong too, I don't think Tom was at, at the meetings, but, but, you know, you-
I was on the roll board, yeah.
But part of mine before, we showed blocks, they came in with different designs and whatnot and thought, okay, that one's the best one. And that's why it was drawn on the plan and it was put on there.
I don't remember that. I'm not saying it didn't happen. I don't, for some reason, recall that part. I don't know why.
Yeah, cause it was put on the plan and this was the ex, the acceptable block.
Cause I think that's what they're operating on, hopefully this is-
That's how I remember it.
In the decision letter, and I'd have to go back to the meeting to recollect that, and I will, um, but in the decision letter, it stated, maybe just for protection sake, that they would be okay with the rocks picked. You know what I mean?
Do you have a point, Mr. Gainer, about reasonableness? Um, I would think it would be reasonable for Mr. White to have contacted either myself or my attorney, and that would be reasonable.
I, I would disagree with that.
Yeah, at least to some kind of definitive timetable.
It shouldn't have happened.
Did you have a survey?
You should have to come here.
We were talking, you were gonna have it surveyed.
I am gonna have it surveyed after the wall was put up, because if I have it surveyed now, Mr. White has in the past removed those survey stakes. And if I do it now, I just fear that he's going to just remove those stakes at will.
Well, especially while it's under construction, the stakes are ultimately earned away. I'm sure that's, I'm not sure of anything, but I suspect that they got moved because they were gonna excavate. Of course, they were operating on this assumption that they had this easement that, as I've brought up several times, the fact that it was on the plan is, means nothing. There apparently was never an executed document recordable and recorded.
Do we know that?
That never happened. I, I don't believe so. I did a cursory check of the registry.
Well, I have never signed an easement, uh, for that, uh, for that land to be used. I signed an easement to have the, the drainage put in, but there's no easement for, uh, for Mr. White's construction. And as far as the, the, the lot lines go, um, where those posts would go would be at the lot line and should not interfere with what he does on his property.
I think what happened, again, I'm theorizing here, I think what happened was where they were thinking, or maybe they weren't thinking it, they just wanted to do it, I don't know, I can't get inside their head.
Yeah.
But where they were gonna do that excavating, the over-excavating, those stakes would come out with the excavation.
Right, the encroachment.
Right, the encroachment, exactly. So, I, you know, whether that would happen again or not, I mean, right now isn't, to your point, is not the time to do it until they put the, put everything back in place.
Right.
Yeah, yeah, and that, that's reasonable, but I, I, you know. Kind of piggybacking back on, circling back on what Mr. Gainer said, I don't know what's to be gained at this point, other than waiting another week and seeing if we can get this all done and over with, and then everyone can forget about it. He seemed committed when I spoke to him. He said, look, we had some terrible weather, we finally got the blocks in, they got some up. He said the leveling, and, and I think everybody agrees, it's the base that makes all the difference in this thing. If you don't have that base, like I said, level the true, and everything else looks like hell. Uh, but I think if you're patient enough to wait another week, I think, I have reasonable expectation that they'll get it done. And again, I'm not defending them, I'm just trying to, you know, mitigate any-
Okay.
Any, you know what I'm saying?
Yep.
Is there any way, if you talk to him, you can tell him that he should contact the owner if there's gonna be more delays?
Uh, yeah.
Or, or his attorney or somebody?
I, I actually mentioned to him, you should have reached out.
Great point.
Not only to us, but to the Algerists.
Yeah, yeah.
And let them know that it wasn't gonna happen last week.
And that's not being unreasonable.
It, it, don't just assume because we had lousy weather that everybody understands that.
Yeah. And a little communications.
Yeah. Yeah, good point. Mr. Chair, sorry. Oh, I'm sorry.
Uh, we never received a copy of the plans for that lot. And last meeting, it was supposed to be given to us.
Copy of-
Right plans of the storage buildings.
Oh.
Right. The executed site plan.
Yeah, I, again, that was before my, my tenure, so I, I, and, well.
So even from the planning board's perspective, at this point, you don't know what they're really doing.
Well, only according to the plan that's on record. I mean, do I personally know? No, because I never reviewed the plans, um, but-
But without being able to find the plans, I mean, you don't know whether or not.
Without being able to find the plans, the, the site plans have been recorded. That's, they show through the, the fourteen pages of when we were there in the backyard.
Something that was put together.
If there's any substantial change from what was, what was applied for and approved on by the board, if there's any substantial change, then yes, there's gonna be a problem. But if, as long as the, uh, the building positions and the, where they're located and access and all that other things are, are met and required, then, uh-
I don't know that they got recorded, because typically they don't get recorded. Dale, did we determine that we cannot find the plans for, um, three-eighteen?
I have not looked yet.
Okay, let's see if we can find them first, uh, cause we, hopefully, I mean, now we keep a signed copy for ourselves, but hopefully we can find a signed copy and do that.
Right. Tom, what, what would this be? This is like small paperwork, says Exhibit A, the plan. The plan has been prepared by Alger Family Trust, um, dated April twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty-four by Silver Engineering, recorded with the Plymouth County Registered Deeds and Plan Book oh-oh-oh-six-eight, page eighty-six.
Is, is that the plan?
That.
Or is that the, the, the easement?
It sounds to me like the easement. The easement plan, that's what I believe it is.
Okay.
But not for trees, it was for the drainage?
For the drainage, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, excuse me, yes, yeah, for the-
Yeah, I get that, yeah.
Okay. You're saying that could be the plan? I feel like I looked for online and I didn't see a plan online on the, um, registered deeds. Um, I did go in to the office yesterday and-
Yep.
And tried to look for that or find out what was gonna happen with the plan, so look for it.
One, one of the, uh, the town's issues is that even Danielle wasn't here for that, and there was a gap in terms of coverage for the planning board, and then the big move, all kinds of things that- I want to say lost. I don't know that they're permanently lost, but displaced is probably- But we'll, we'll have it a look.
My concern is that they could do anything they want at this point.
No, we, we'll be able to find a plan. We'll be able to find a plan, even if we have to ask for one from the engineer. They're hopefully responsible to.
Okay.
Hopefully. That's the upper word there.
Did you review the, um, the, um, meeting, like video?
For which one?
For this, like to see, you know, when we signed the plan and everything.
No, I did not.
I'll do that.
Yeah, we'll do a little research and try to come up with that. Pat Brennan's probably, at the very least, Pat Brennan's got one, our review engineer.
Right copy.
Yeah, so I, I'm confident we'll come up with a copy.
Okay.
Chris, you heard, I'm sorry.
One-twenty-nine Circuit Street. Uh, I had a question, cause I was at those meetings way back when that started, and I hear a name, Tracy White. It sounds like, cause they had Sylvia Engineering and another company that was gonna build the buildings, but did they leave?
The property was sold.
Yeah, it was RJ, um, how do you say it? R-N-J-L-L-C.
So this is a new person building them than what was here originally when it was approved?
Correct.
Cause I remember there were more residents here when that was first going through, and, uh, I remember that, I just watched the recording of the meeting. There were other conditions, and I was at that meeting where he came up with all the conditions, like the sign, the hours. Did all that get recorded?
So there's a decision letter right here, and it says the easement states maintenance and drainage inspections will be done twice a year. If necessary, it will be an appertained- I'm sorry, an appertinent easement with the Halifax Country Club, and then lists the address and the Alger property. Um, the easement will be recorded at the Plymouth County Registered Dees before any permits or work can be started. The hours of operation for all days will be six to ten. The dimensions for the signs will be put on the site plan for the street and the building, and they will comply with all Halifax bylaws. There will be no outside storage of any kind ever. There'll be a twelve-foot abreviating and blocked wall with Algeric stones and blocks that'll be placed at the facility.
Okay, so that did all get recorded from all the residents input, okay. Cause I thought, I, I watched the recording of the last meeting, it sounded like Tracy White wasn't aware of a lot of those conditions or something.
Well, it was confusing, cause he was also in possession of a plan that showed this fifteen-foot, um, landscaping easement, like we talked about earlier. And again, you know, the fact that it's on a plan means nothing unless there's a recorded instrument, so. But he was operating, he says he was operating on the idea that it was approved, but we can't find any evidence of that, so that's a whole different thing now.
Some kind of semi-loss. I mean, she specifically read, remember, we were talking at, at the site.
Yeah, it's in the same-
Where, uh, we, he brought forward a site plan with the twelve-foot abrevieties. He said he spoke with your mother about making sure the abrevieties were there. He said, yes, yes, sure, they would, they were part of the condition. The site plan, uh, when we met at your place, now you don't want the abrevieties.
Well, I'll let my mother speak about that.
Well, you said you spoke to your mother, and she said no, and she said no such thing about the abreviating.
That would be hearsay. Speak to my mother exactly.
Um, that we, that we placed out the facility is the actual wording though.
Yeah, which doesn't, doesn't say where.
Right, but they were talking, they were adamant that, that the abrevieties were not gonna be on the property, and Mr. White had said, Mr. White had said that he had spoken specifically with Mrs. Alger.
Hold on, hold on, Mr. Chair.
And that's what Mr. White said, but this is my mother, and she can speak directly to that.
Yeah, just sit down by yourself, please.
We were riding the, the golf cart around. Two men came toward us and waved as if they wanted to talk to us. And he, Mr. White introduced himself, said he bought the plans as is, and this is what the plan showed with the abrevieties, but he did not say on our land, it was here. And it was his land. Now, I don't know what happened between then and now, but he did not say where those trees were gonna go. And we also, and you should remember this, we also got up and said, if we are not going to give an easement, another fifteen-foot easement for those trees, so no trees at all.
Oh, okay, so there's no trees. Oh, okay, so there's no trees.
And that was in the recorded things here, and it should be in the archive somewhere.
Exactly. On the, on the site plan that we looked at, the abrevieties were shown on his side of the wall. And I understood after the conversation, maybe, again, I wasn't there. I thought he wanted them on your side of the wall, so you wouldn't, so you wouldn't see the wall.
No.
Because he said, I assure Mrs. Alger that the, the abrevieties were going to be there, and they showed on the plan on their side of the wall. So that was my confusion, I guess, then, when, well, I don't think that the abreviation were ever going to be on your side of the wall. They were going to be on, on the other property.
Actually, the wording in the letter, it doesn't even get specific about the abrevieties. It just says twelve-foot.
They were on the site plan, the ones that they showed us there.
Will be placed at the facility, so.
And, and he had made mention, well, you're coming over in the golf cart and speaking about the abrevieties and making sure they were going to be there, and he is, he said, I assured Mrs. Alger, yes, the abrevieties are going to be there.
As long as they're on his land, everything is fine.
Great, awesome.
Because I remember some residents too, you know, I mean, obviously, you guys are great, but the looks of it from the street, the big multi-story building to try to make it look nice.
Yeah, try to mitigate the look of it, sure.
Exactly.
Landscaping, and it was more the concern of the big two-story one, trying to block it a little.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, it's on the facility, so I would think that the town would have to be the ones to tell them not to put up the, the abrevieties. Not, it's part of the decision letter.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not really the Algers at that point, because it, it's supposed to be on the facility.
Right, it's on the site plan.
Yeah.
They are on the site plan, not.
I think they're all right with the trees as long as they're on.
Well, right.
And that's correct.
And it's on the decision property. Within following the decision letter, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
So you all right with that?
Are you okay for the time being?
I'm good.
Okay. We're going to follow up on it too.
Thank you.
All righty.
We were going to do the minutes next meeting?
Yeah, yes, but I wanted to, um, to talk about the letters from Midland and, uh, yes, please, and a request for certificate of occupancy, a temporary certificate of occupancy condition at three fourteen Plymouth Street, which is also known as the Starbucks site. And we have another question from a lot of people today. I'm just going to read the letter from Midland Contractors.
In regards to.
In regards to three fourteen Plymouth Street, which is also known as Starbucks.
Okay, so we have a letter from Leaders on October sixteenth, twenty twenty five. It was sent to Danielle Akaki, Administrative Assistant, Town of Halifax. Reclarification for TCO at three fourteen Plymouth Street. Dear Ms. Akaki, thank you for your time and consideration at the town's planning and zoning meeting on October sixteenth, twenty twenty five. Unfortunately, due to circumstances beyond our control, we are unable to have a representative attend. This letter is intended to provide written clarification regarding our request related to a temporary certificate of occupancy for, uh, three fourteen Plymouth Street development. Our two tenants at this location, Starbucks and Autozone, are targeting store openings in February or March of twenty twenty six. The permanent traffic signal at the site's intersection will not be completed until April twenty twenty six. In the interim, we have installed a temporary traffic signal. Our tenants have requested written confirmation that the temporary signal will be sufficient to obtain a TCO when their stores are ready to open. Leaders Real Estate has spoken with Joseph Braga, Building Commissioner, who confirmed that the temporary traffic signal will be acceptable for TCO purposes until the permanent signal is installed and certificates of occupancy are issued. To clarify, we are not seeking TCO approval at this time, only confirmation regarding the sufficiency of the temporal signal. A related matter concerns erosion control responsibility at the Autozone site. Leaders Real Estate is currently responsible for maintaining erosion control at that site. Autozone is expected to assume control of the site within the next few weeks, at which point they will take over responsibility for erosion control measures. Thank you for your attention to these items. Please let us know if any further documentation or clarification is needed. Sincerely, Nathan Palma, Manager, Leaders Real Estate.
Are you from?
Yeah, hi. Yeah, my name is Keith McConnell. I'm the Superintendent for Midland General Contractors. So if I can help shine any light on anything.
Step into the breach. Yeah, we had a conversation not too long ago, you and I, about the site. I've been incredibly unhappy about the site. It's a mess most of the time, and we expressed that to you. And you did clean it up that day. We had another incident yesterday, and I believe that got cleaned up a little better. And I know it's under construction and all of that.
Sure.
But, you know, some care needs to be taken to leave the site in a reasonable manner, uh, most of the time, when you're not physically digging or operating on the site. There's some other concerns, though, and I'm going to make the board pretty to this information as well, because I get a phone call this afternoon from the site engineer, our site review engineer, Pat. And, uh, because he was asking whether he should come in tonight, and he commented that he has not been called to inspect anything of the work that's been done. So all that drainage work and all the basins and everything have not been looked at by the review engineer. So I'm going to ask the board tonight, not that we need a motion, but I want, I want everybody to be involved in this, for a motion to contact our review engineer and have him go out to the site and report back to us his findings. Something you may need to do, um, I spoke also this afternoon, because he reached out to me, was Reed Blockburger from Leaders. And I expressed the concerns I had, and speaking for myself and not the board, that's why I wanted the board to kind of get involved in this, about the same things that I brought up. None of these things were done in terms of inspected. Now, that isn't just for this site. That also happens to be for the store site. And he's, our review engineer is going out there tomorrow, so he may ask for and or require the opening of the pits and or any other means to inspect.
Sure, yeah.
All that stuff that was done there was never inspected or reviewed by the review engineer.
And is this directed towards conservation?
No, towards us, well, and conservation. Conservation has another issue. You need to contact Conservation.
Conservation has been contacted several times. One lady come out. I've said several times, give me an inspection fee list, whatever we need to do, you know, to get things cleared up, and emails go nowhere.
Yeah, well, your, your engineer should know.
Yeah, no, I, I, I'm not disagreeing.
Should know to contact the review engineer, and tell him how I've run this job, and just tell him what I have seen over the years and what my experience has been.
So, yeah, so I had several contacts with, with them out there, and finally, some lady, Kathy, I believe, came out and.
Caitlin, yeah.
Caitlin.
Yeah.
And she says, yeah, we kind of dropped the ball on this, and.
Yeah, they didn't require you to file for a stormwater permit.
Yeah, yeah, and at that point, we're done. You know, and of course, that was prior to me even getting there.
No, no, I understand, you're new on the job.
So, but, but as soon as I landed, I, I contacted a lot of people, because, you know, that's the first thing I like to do is land and find all the stakeholders, you know, to make sure you guys understand what's on the plans, you know, the, the fire chief, I had him out there several times, the highway commissioner, you know, to make sure everybody's understanding what we're doing, because my job is to try to avoid rework. So I want to know what's happening, you know, what do you want first, so we can do it right the first time. And, uh, you know, so then it moved on to where I started contacting Conservation, and I'm like, you know, I don't know if anybody's had any inspections on this stuff, you know, what's, what's been going on? And then she commented back and said, we kind of dropped the ball on that. And I said, okay, that's fine, but this is where we're at now. Let's do what we need to do.
What about drainage now?
Starting drainage.
Okay, as far as having the pay review engineer to, uh, to inspect them.
He's, this is why I was looking for the board to support me with a motion to have our review engineer, while he's on site tomorrow at the other facility, to also review what's been done at this facility and determine if any action needs to be done, or what needs to be done to get back on track here.
And maybe things that are different than what the plan.
Correct.
Your opinion, especially how you're going to know that.
Yeah, exactly. So moved.
Well, yeah, um, yeah, so, yeah, we'd be able to pull the, the manhole covers, you know, he could check for interceptors.
Whatever it is.
Whatever he needs, he can do. For, that, that's been my whole stake on this.
Just want it done, that's all.
Yeah, and I just try to, hey, get them, hey, I believe, like, we all agreed the ball was got dropped, and they're, okay, we're not going to point fingers, you know? But now that I'm here and you're here, and we all understand, let's, let me give you what you want.
This is, this is exactly why when I had sent a communication to you guys, letting her know we were going to bring this up, and we wanted somebody from either Leaders or Midland or somebody.
Somebody, right, yeah.
Explain what the heck is going on.
Appreciate you stepping up.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, no, no worries.
And then our original communication, Amy read one tonight, but there was one prior to that.
Do you want me to read it?
Do you have it there? That was really talking about the TCO, and it was confusing, because it looked like somebody was looking for a TCO now.
No, right, and I, I saw that one email, and that was the main reason why I was here, to help shine some light on that. Right, so as she explained in the letter, yeah, she was going quite fast, but, um, really, no, that's not what they're at.
Correct.
So the, the big picture is basic.
Are we okay with the temporary light?
Yes, and, because Autozone doesn't want to start until they're assured.
They can open.
That, that temporary signal light is not going to stop them from opening. So basically, you could write back and say, yeah, once you complete your project and you do receive.
Assuming everything else is completed and.
Yeah.
Completed properly, the, the light itself. I, I personally don't have a problem with temporary traffic light.
Yeah.
I don't think anyone else did. I know that I spoke to the Highway Superior, he was okay with it.
Yeah.
And the building inspector is.
Building inspector.
The mass arm, so, I'll, I'll be honest with you, that mass arm will probably ship in April, ship.
They're, they're on delay.
Get put in.
They're in delay everywhere. I can attest to that.
Right, so that, that's the reality of it, is, so.
But in that original letter, it was unclear.
Sure.
And there was rumors floating about the Autozone was not going in, and of course, that triggered questions of, all right, how are we leaving this site if that's not going to be in? How are you going, are you going to leave that slope on that side of the driveway? Is the driveway going to be completed? I, you know, there was a million questions that came up. But now you're confirming that it is coming in, and they're going to open at the same time. Is that the plan, as far as you go?
No, I, I doubt that. They just want to know that, hey, if we come in, finish our project, and we're done before that new mass arm is put up, and it's still functioning on the temporary light system, will you give us a TCO pending that light?
They finally got clear. That original letter was not clear.
No, not, not at all, right.
Because they shouldn't be asking, because it looked like they were looking for a TCO. What they wanted was confirmation that the TCO would be okay, assuming that all the other requirements were completely.
Yeah, you, you got it. That's it right there.
I mean, they already have right here that the, um, the Joseph Braga, the Building Commissioner, said that the temporary signal would be okay.
Yeah, but that wasn't the first letter. The first letter was confusing.
No, no, I'm a hundred percent in agreement. I'm, I'm saying that I don't think we should add anything in writing that could be convoluted into anything else. They already have what they need. We will go, like, you'll get, you'll get a, the light, the light's okay. I mean, that's not really.
Yeah, but, but, yeah, but we still, but we still sign off on the, on the site plan that all the conditions were met.
Right, I'm just saying, like, getting into, like, sending a letter that could.
Well, I, I don't, I don't, I don't personally have a problem with a very, pretty specific communication indicating that the, um, the planning board, um, would be in, uh.
Agreement to just the light?
To, yeah.
As long as absolutely.
I disagree. I'm going to disagree with that.
Yeah.
Because there's no way shape of form, I, my own personal vote, you know, not certainly speak for the rest of the board, that even if everything is.
No, go ahead.
Even if everything is all squared away with, with Starbucks, that there's going to be, uh, the asphalt is going to stop there, there's going to be still the dirt and whatnot on the Autozone side. I'm specifically very concerned with public safety wise. You have people going through the drive-through, they're just going to go flying across a dirt driveway? I, I can't vote for that.
But we wouldn't sign off on it.
Yes, there's no way.
So what I'm saying is, we wouldn't sign off on that.
On that part of the project, right, that would, that would mean Starbucks, hey, Starbucks doesn't get certified about privacy. So the criteria is Starbucks is going to be, everything that needs to take, to get certified.
The whole island, the traffic island, the no.
Yeah, yeah.
That's going to be squared away.
Yeah, I know that, the amazing line between the two projects, and I, I brought that up, and.
I'm also going to offer up, I would be in favor of, if you're not going to have the permanent traffic signal installed, a bond be provided for completion of that project.
I'm a hundred percent behind that.
Yeah, I mean, I don't have a dog in the fight, so. I'm just here to try to represent and help shine light on what's really happening, in case there's confusion. You know, if somebody says that, you know, hey, I want a fifty thousand dollar bond, I agree with you.
Yeah, yeah.
You need the assurance.
We need the assurance, yes.
That's it right there.
Exactly, I mean, we've had plenty, plenty of occasions to not get projects completed because there was no bond provided. I just got one question, trying to figure it out. So who is Lendis? Midland is the GC doing the work. Leaders is the owner. They're the real.
He is now owns both.
It's one lot. It's one lot.
Yeah, nine fourteen, eight three fourteen.
Not the storage. They have the easement, though, for that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
There's all kinds of drainage easements back.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, A has an easement from B.
Original letter came from Midland.
C and D. A and B have an easement from D.
Yeah, exactly.
So it's still confusing.
Can I just have one quick moment?
Sure.
Um, I did receive an email from Highway. I just wanted to make you aware, um, like, ten minutes at seven tonight. I did put it in the file for three fourteen in the hard drive, if you guys would like to pull it up. Um, I know he has some stipulations on a few things. I don't know if it's relevant to what you're talking about right now, but if you'd like to look at it, it is in there.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Daniel.
Can I ask you to move a little to the right? I was trying to look around you, but it was a little hard.
And Jake, you're just confusing things more. It's Midland now. Who was it before this?
I, I really don't know. I got out here.
Midland's been there for a day one.
You know, I'm, I'm headed to a different project. I get told to turn around. I didn't know nothing to even have this project. And I get told to turn around, come out here, and.
Surprise.
Yeah, yeah. And so I, I do what I typically do when I land. I want to know all the stakeholders. You know, everybody's important to me, and just like you're saying, hey, just because it's on the plans, I know that from years of experience, doesn't mean it's correct, you know?
Shall I read this into record?
Yes, please.
Highway Department, October sixteenth, twenty twenty five, planning board members, the issues I have had with three fourteen Plymouth Street with a stormwater. I may have missed something in the beginning, but anytime a plan comes to me, I question the stormwater runoff. If I see that the stormwater may run onto the street. But they had already started work, and on the site, when I noticed the stormwater would be running onto Plymouth Street, and I brought it to someone's attention. Sorry, I can't recall who I contacted from Concom or Keith, the new GC at the site. But they did address my concern and added two more basins. If you can, I'm asking the board to add a stipulation that for one year, if stormwater runoff flow onto Plymouth Street, that from their entrance exit, the must-add basins or, oh, they must add, I'm sorry, they must add basins, it's missing a Y, or do something to stop the runoff from making it onto Plymouth Street. I also wanted to let the board know that I had put off paving this section of one oh six and paved the section starting at Cumby's, because I thought three fourteen would try to stop building in twenty twenty three. Now that we have had that paved section of one oh six in front of three fourteen last year, I added stipulations for the trench permits. Here are a couple of the stipulations. Backfill the trench with excavatable, flowable fill. Uh, minimum of ten feet from the edges of trench is to be milled at a minimum of depth of one and a half inches. Apply emulsion tack at joints of existing asphalt prior to laying top course. Myself or someone from Highway will be there for this final step. Highway will be there for this final step, the reason I bring this up is I went to check the waterline trench and they had already backfilled the first half of the trench with regular fill, I told them they could finish backfilling and temporary pave, but they would have to dig up the trench and do as the trench stipulations say, they agreed and done trench back up yesterday and backfilled with flowable fill, they have.
Corrected.
Corrected, thank you, corrected the things
Corrected.
That I have found wrong, but must say this has been the most difficult project I've dealt with, I'm not sure if it's having to deal with two or three engineering firms or the town started the open.gov in the middle of this, sincerely, Steve Hayward.
Yeah, well, there was other issues too, including the no detail officer and that whole fiasco, the first time the trench was opened.
Yeah.
I, in, in regards to the trench being opened the second time, was that also to accommodate another waterline or was that just to repair?
No, that, this, I mean, just recently?
Yeah.
That was, because we didn't fulfill his stipulations the first time.
I heard something about they needed to run another waterline or something.
No, no, we, we had to correct.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, the fill, yeah.
Okay.
Weren't we going to get, um, an estimate on how much that bond would be based on, um, you know, like you said 50, but that was just.
No, I thought you was just throwing a number.
Oh, right, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, it's being equal to the cost of the new lights.
Yeah.
You know?
Yeah.
I thought 50 would cover it.
It probably is going to be, I don't know, it might be very close because, uh, I'll have to see how much the proposal is, you know, um, but a lot of work's done, we're kind of just waiting on the mass.
Let us know, let Danielle know, you know, what the estimate was so we can.
Yeah, let me know what the estimate was and then just.
We'll get a number.
We can reach out to, Pat can reach out to this traffic guy.
Yeah.
Those, those masks have gotten incredibly expensive because they're all coming from overseas.
Where do I send the email to?
Danielle.
Just Danielle at the.
Okay, I'll, I'll find it, yeah, I saw some traffic.
Um, I think in principle, speaking for myself, I don't have a problem with the temporary light, assuming all, everything else is finished and we have a bond to cover the, the cost of the equipment, but there should be a time limit on it.
One and a half times with the labor.
Yeah, but, um, aside from the money, a time limit, um, yeah, so that.
For the TCO.
Yeah, yeah, so that there isn't any procrastination, you know, hey, we can use this on another site, you know.
I know, I'm just not.
Justifiable way with the extension.
Right.
Uh, 320 Clifford Street, Tom Alger, um, so, the other thing that, one thing I would like to bring up here regarding the Starbucks project is the, essentially the downstream effects of the stormwater, uh, so, uh, we still have two massive or two very, very large sinkholes as a result of that, uh, those drainage coming through, so, I'm not certain or I'm not satisfied whether or not those drains are actually working, so I know I had a hundred percent guarantee that, you know, those storm, those pipes would be working, the, the water will be flowing before Starbucks would get a, an occupancy permit, so.
Okay, well, that's all going to be part of the review.
Okay.
I mean, I know there's some sinking out there, but it's not unusual to have compaction around that excavation, I, you know, I wasn't too concerned about that, you, I don't even know if you know what we're talking about.
Probably a little bit, I think, because there's several contractors involved, and I know at the end of the day, all the retained water is, storm drainage water is going to the golf course.
Because it was, um, uh, the cut, well, RNJ.
RNJ.
RNJ, who actually, uh, did, hired out the, the excavating for the pipes, right, and the placement of the pipes for the drainage, so, and he did say he, with that day on the site, that they would take care of it, and that was a good story, um.
It's not unusual for it to settle out.
Yeah, right.
It's just, their best compassion is rain, believe it or not, that everything.
Yeah.
But then they got to fix, get it all finished.
But that's the piece we haven't heard anything about.
Yes, absolutely.
You know, there's no.
So, in, in this letter here that, uh, Steve Hayward just put out, um, he, he requested the two additional catch basins, right, at, at our site.
No, you put in two additional.
Yeah, we would have been.
But he was, I think what I heard was, he said if the flow does not.
Oh, it doesn't capture the flow.
It doesn't.
He wanted another couple of drains.
Yeah, so he, he wants like a year, uh, to make sure that it's going to work.
Right.
So Pat will look at those tomorrow too, they'll probably have to be on, um, added to the actual asphalt.
Yeah, this, this is a work in progress, when we get to that point and they're looking for occupancy, we can also ask for additional bonding.
Right.
You know, there's, there's a lot of things we can do, that's where we have some of power.
Yeah, oh, that's funny, because I first met Matt with Steve, right, and, uh, talking about, hey, can I get permit to get the traffic light going, and it's, everything's stuck, and then of course there's dot gov.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Learning curve doesn't, wasn't quite complete yet.
Yeah.
Um, you know, he's like, you know, no one's ever, uh, responded to me about additional, I don't want no storm drainage on on the Plymouth Street, right, I said, okay, well, I'll be pushing that for you, you know, so I, I worked with him to get the two additional ones, and he did approve those, I guess.
So far, with, with a watch time of a year.
Yeah, that he wants to, the additional, yeah.
Which is reasonable.
Yeah.
Cool.
I, I have to say, that's one of the most complicated sites I've ever seen, for, for a small site.
Well, yeah, there, there's a lot going on.
A lot going on, yeah.
Yeah, I, I didn't even get told, there's really, I got, I mean, for me, I, I got it broke down to almost four projects, right, you got Starbucks, which is part of the mixed use group, AutoZone, which is part of the mixed use group, we just had to bring, uh, infrastructure to them, you know, uh, you got 318, that access road going down with that retention pond.
Driveway.
Which is that, yeah, the drive, and the retention pond, which is our portion of the scope of work, then the traffic light signal improvement, that's the fourth one, you know, so there's a lot going on, and then we hand off to 318.
Which brings up the question. When the 318 was not going to go forward at that time, there was an agreement between RNJ and Midland or, or Leaders, that they were going to complete the road up to the entrance or just past the entrance to the Starbucks, and then they were going to take it from there afterwards, is that still the case? Who's going to complete the road?
Basically, that's basically what's happening, except for we're going a little further, now another, uh, 45 feet past that.
And they're picking up from there?
And then, yes, their Tracy White should be picking up from that point, um, I, I, you know, all, all I know is, I, I talked to Tracy all the time, we all got to work together.
You're going to have to because you're sharing that entrance.
Yeah, it's only way it's going to work, you know, and, uh, you know, like, he, he knows I don't have a dog in the fight, who owns what land or whatever, that's none of my end, you know, but he always came up to me, he says, no, when I bought this land, uh, there was, uh, some money in, uh, what do you call it, me holding a account.
Like an escrow account.
Escrow account, correct, and he says, there's mine escrow account to bring that drive all the way down to this manhole here, and I, all I can do is push it out there and see what they say, and, uh.
But it wasn't all the money, it was part of the money.
Yeah, there's not, there's not enough money.
Yeah, RNJ was going to put, I believe the number was $125,000.
Yeah, that, that wasn't even close, eh.
No, no, but Midland or Leaders was going to put the rest of.
Yeah.
And me, or me and I had, but that's another story.
Yeah, and I, I don't get, get none of that.
And that's not my business either.
Yeah, and.
As long as the road gets done, that's all.
Yeah, and so, when, and just talking about money, when the sidewalk started to get sloppy there, um, you know, I'm, I'm pounding the site contractor, right, he's not answering my phone or nothing, right, and he finally shows up and I say, you got to get this fixed together, right, and I says, where were you, what was going on, right, he says, he says, Keith, the only leverage I had, because I wasn't getting paid, was not to show up. So that's what he told me, I hope it's the truth, that he has been paid, you know, so hopefully he maintains that a lot better, you know, and I, I, I stress with them every day, listen, you're, you're under the microscope, we're, we're all under the microscope right here, keep this nice, you know, so.
Well, once they go to that the same time, everybody's no notice and we're looking harder every time, you know what I'm saying?
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, I think that they just are looking for a letter, and you guys are able to produce that, or?
Let me just take one question here first, because he's had the same thing for a while.
I think you've answered most of it now, this temporary light, this is really the only change, that everything else has to still be done to the site plan, the shared road, the left turn only, the right.
Correct.
All that would be the same before they open.
Correct.
Because I know when this first went, you know, upstairs were packed of residents, and that was one of the big things, was the traffic safety and concerns got denied, they came back with this revised plan where, to have the traffic all go the right way, so that would all be in place, it's just the light.
That was the confusion that was generated by the first letter we got, because it sounded like they were looking for a TCO, temporary certificate of occupancy, for the whole site, whoa, whoa, timeout, we got a lot of stuff to go before we get there, but if it's just specifically the light, and I, I believe that's where we're at, I, I personally don't have a problem with that.
Yeah.
Is this discussion enough for everybody, I mean, you have us on, on, um, you know, the conversation now is videotaped, so, I don't.
I think, I think.
It's not sufficient for their attorneys or lawyers.
Yeah, I wouldn't think it would.
I think.
Yeah, because other than that, we, because I know it came out, hey, Joe Bray says this in the email, and I know Midland requested back, I got to have it on your letterhead.
I mean, I.
So, that, that's really where it's at.
If everybody's in agreement, um, you know, I mean.
Hey, one other question, is, is the traffic light, the temporary one will function the same as the permanent one?
Great question.
Does it work, do it work with the other two, it's not going to be a chaos with a temporary?
That's what I was told by the Highway Superior.
Right, and the temporary lighting system is in, other than the.
It's just putting the mask where it's ultimately going to be.
It'll be the, the, the new mass arm, so what we did is, you know, we, we took the existing mass arm and moved it across to, for, to incorporate that in with our temporary lighting system, and put new, new pedestals up there, so the system's in, ready to go, but it's still flashing yellow due to, because it's no chance of changing the timing in the heads right now to confuse everybody.
Right.
But once everything's complete, the traffic signal guy will get right in there, adjust all the lights to function.
The way they're going to ultimately function.
Yeah, that's it, yeah.
I'd feel more comfortable after the PR engineer goes out there tomorrow and sends our report.
And I'd feel more comfortable too, with the, uh, the estimate there, so, to, to make a definitive amendment, a charity bond before we, yeah, sure, go ahead and do it, let's have everything in place before.
Absolutely, that's, I would just.
I agree.
Suggesting at some point, we could come up with some labels that would, you know, be innocuous enough, convincing enough, but we're going to have to do a little work before we get to that.
Yeah, and then we'll go over that, um, PR engineering report, hopefully on November 6th.
You're looking at least, I'd say, I'm, I'm guessing at least a month before we can generate that.
Generate some type of letter.
Yeah.
I would think so, I would agree with that.
Well, yeah, other than I don't think.
I just think we add.
It just will delay.
No, 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 that's what I intended, but.
That's it right there.
I want, I just want to make sure that that drainage that we had, that, that that installed, it actually works and that we don't have continuous, uh.
Well, that's why, well, that's why the review engineer's going out there tomorrow tomorrow, and that was one of the things we asked, I, well, I asked him because he called me, but I said, you want to take a look at everything on that site?
I'll make, yeah, I'll make a motion to PGV go out and do the, um, PR engineering on the site thus far, including and not limited to, um, the RNJ LLC drainage that goes all the way over to the country club and passes by 314.
And report the conditions back to the board.
Yes, hopefully by November 6th.
Does that include the inspection that he was referring to before, that it wasn't done and really needs to be done?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
Encompasses everything.
Everything.
You don't want to have to go back and do it all over again.
And adding what Bert said, to be specific to the motion.
I'll second that.
Yeah, yeah, do you have that line with, uh, Danielle?
And.
Because I'm not going to be a little repeated, so.
You're funny.
At least you remember your name.
Yeah, I remembered yours, I do, although I didn't announce it.
Do you want me to brush it up then, so, the motion to have the, um, PR engineer go out and do the PR engineering on the entire 314.
318.
318 and, um, RNJ LLC and, and Alger easement for drainage the entire distance.
And report back to the board.
Which I think includes what Bert said after that, okay.
All right, I'll second.
Is that better, Danielle?
One more time. No.
Thank you.
Moved and seconded the motion that Amy read. I'm going to, I'm going to ask for a roll call vote, Amy Trup?
Yes.
Tom Leese, myself, yes, Bert Gainer?
Yes.
Bruce Stilber?
Yes.
And Jimmy Walsh?
Yes.
You can.
And do we have enough money in the revolving account for it?
Um, Danielle's going to have to check, and if there isn't, they're going to have to supply it, or we're not going to move forward to.
Right.
I imagine you heard that, and I don't mean to ask, right?
So it's basically, um, how will Leaders get informed of the next steps that you guys are taking?
Well, uh, probably at the next meeting, uh, which is, oh, it's, it's going to be three weeks, right? No, two weeks, it's the 6th, we're meeting the 6th. Yeah, so we'll have, hopefully have some feedback on the 6th that we can send back to you.
Okay, yeah, because I, I'm sure Reed will probably be blowing somebody's phone up.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, I'm going to tell them what, whatever I come up with, and you guys will probably end up repeating it, you know.
And if he could send that estimate to Danielle, correct?
Yeah, I'm going to get that.
Yeah, and our, our guy can send that to his traffic guy to see if it's reasonable.
Oh, yeah, confirm.
Right.
Yeah, to see if that's feasible, and, you know, a good portion of the work's done because it includes the temporary system and so forth, you know, so, you know.
Okay, so, so if we get that back on the 6th, the following meeting, which would be, what, uh.
20th.
Uh, the.
20th.
Thank you.
You might be able to, hopefully be able to generate a letter about the TCO for the arm.
Yeah.
Okay.
Works for me.
Okay, but I, I'm glad you came in, thank you.
Yeah, thanks a lot, appreciate it.
And I got told everybody, that's when I first met everybody, that the site's open, so you've got an issue, come and talk to me and do the best I can.
It isn't always that accessible, just saying.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, okay.
Oh, you know what? While you're here, is that a handicap sidewalk that?
Oh, the structure out front?
The ramp?
Yeah.
Yeah, and I, I think that's, it's camouflaged on the plan. Has I never picked it up?
Um, that, that's right, so, um, once again, this project is something else. So if you drive out there one day, right, look at how high the curb is. It's two...
Two inches.
Right. All the elevations got taken out like it was six inches. So when I got there, I was like, these elevations aren't working. What, what can we do to make this work? And I said, we gotta get some type of retaining wall in here to hold up the parking lot here.
Yep.
And then it just turned into...
A ramp?
A ramp, yeah.
So then it wouldn't?
Yeah, so it'll have a ramp.
So it wasn't on the plan?
I was gonna say, I don't think so.
So it was not on the plan originally?
There's some type of ramp on the plan.
Well, I saw something, but it was...
But it's not like what's...
It would've just been like a sidewalk.
Due to the elevations.
Oh, I didn't remember a sidewalk even.
The engineer should've come back, cause that should've been a site plan modification.
Uh, yeah, probably, yeah.
As I asked to read this afternoon, someone needs to take command of this and hopefully that.
Yeah, I can only take command as much as I can.
Yeah, I understand.
Like I said, I'll be perfect. Honestly, when I came out here, I wanted to fight her just about every single contractor.
And they wouldn't let you.
For certain other reasons, you know?
And familial.
With that?
And familial.
Yeah, yeah, so, yeah, there's a lot of that.
Yeah, yeah.
I know, so, you know, so if I can shine a little bit of light on this sidewalk and the mess out there, right, the plan is to get, get all the curb here in the next couple weeks and get, get the curb in and the binder course in all in one week.
Yeah, cause you're gonna start losing weather pretty quick.
Yeah, and, and that'll clean that area quite, quite nice, you know, so hopefully we're just a couple weeks, two to three weeks away from that.
Starbucks is planning on opening April 2026. Is that me?
I, I got the show. I'll, I'll hand it off to Starbucks.
Yeah, they have a fitment crew that comes in and takes care of the fit.
Yeah, I, I know they're chopping at the bit to trying to get in there.
Yeah, they wanna start generating. So, so this is my thing. At some point, they're gonna be looking for a TCO anyway, but we'll deal with that at the time.
Yeah, yeah, I, I can't even get a resource to put gas in.
Well, at least the gas main is on your side of the street.
Right, but it, they've had trench permit for two and a half months, I believe.
The gas company's terrible.
Yeah, it's right. The gas company's right.
No, the gas company's terrible.
Yeah, no, right, I mean, and so that, that stops a lot of stuff.
Right.
You know, you can only go so far.
Gotta be careful out there, though. It's a 12-inch main.
Yeah.
That burst once. That thing sounded like a whole airport full of jet engines firing off at the same time. It was amazing. And none of these guys are all out there smoking. I said, you guys nuts?
When was that?
Oh, this is about, oh, 10, 15 years ago. Oh, it's gonna be, 15 years ago anyway.
It was last, yeah, so...
Thank you for coming again.
Yeah, no worries.
What was your, I'm sorry, what was your name again?
Keith McConnell. I'm, I'm signing on the board there for you.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
No worries.
Appreciate it.
Questions, give me a call, anything, I'll do everything. I came for it.
Thank you, sir.
Will do.
Have a good night.
You too.
Nice to meet everybody.
Where are we?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think that's everything.
No, we have Walmart.
Oh, Walmart, yes, let's talk about Walmart. Can you mind reading that letter for us?
Okay. Halifax, um, planning board received from 295 Plymouth Street, Halifax, Massachusetts, Walmart, Conrad Palumbo, um, to Danielle on October 7th at 8:32 AM. Danielle, I'm conducting some due diligence for an upcoming commercial remodel project. Please see below questions. It would help me out greatly if you could provide answers or directions. We will possible, we will possible be, we will possibly be splitting the remodel and expansion scope. These questions are more expansion scope related and general site information. Location, 295 Plymouth Street.
Can I just interrupt one, one second, rather than go through this whole big long thing?
Yeah.
In, in my own personal opinion, reading through all of this, they basically want us to do the home reform, you know?
That's exactly correct.
This is, uh, this is a matter of, uh, there's a state requirement, there's a state building code, there's, uh, town bylaws. Pick up the book and read it. They want us to do all their work, two pages of their work for them.
Future.
And how do I get, how do I get a variance and what do I need and?
You just pre-do your own.
That's what engineers could pay a gazillion dollars for.
And...
And they want his, his five people that are volunteering on the board, and they want us to do their months of work for them.
Now, there might be a couple of things that they can't readily get answers to, but, you know, take care of what you can take care of. And by the way, how about providing us some idea of what the hell you're talking about?
Well, that's exactly where I was gonna go with all of it is, um, send us your proposed plans and a site plan and we'll be able to understand what you're, I mean, cause my idea of what he wrote is gonna be different than your idea.
And posters.
We'll talk about it.
And we'll do it different.
And, and so what is the interpretation of it? So please...
Could you give them my permits for me and do my site plan for me and maybe do a couple trenches for me?
How much do they have to pay for?
Exactly.
And if I need a variance, could you get me one?
Very wet making issues.
No, I agree with you.
Well, why don't you take a motion if someone wants to make a motion about...
I'll make a motion that, um, the, I don't know if it needs to really be a motion, but I will make a motion to send a letter to, um, Walmart stating, please send in the full site plan requirements so that we fully understand and are able to answer your questions. See, uh, the Halifax bylaws, the building code, and...
The state building code, yeah.
Yeah.
And we will run, we, I'm sorry, I didn't...
You're fine.
Bottom line, the board can do nothing without a, an application before us.
Right.
So to re, to review all these plans and documents and whatnot, and we don't even have an application in front of us, never mind the site plan. So when you're, when you're ready...
I've told them this several times, Bert. I have told them more than once that these questions are almost impossible without any kind of application, and they just...
Well, I feel...
Continue to send for emails with more questions.
I feel Danielle, it is impossible. It's, it's just not gonna happen.
Not entertain your request without a formal application of site plan.
I'll add that in. Please send us a formal site plan applica, my motion is this now. Please, um, Walmart, please send in a full site plan application.
Completed.
Completed to us and we will be able to more certainly answer your questions as we won't, I don't know, something like that?
Yeah, um, to entertain any of your requests or for information, the plan would require a, an application of a site plan approval. End of story.
Nice and simple.
Whatever happened with them adding fuel to, to the Walmart?
Totally make reference to it.
That might be part of it, yeah.
We don't know.
If they never forget fuel.
They just came and talked about it.
Yeah, they do that too. And if you're gonna give us one, we have to do it.
That's the whole thing, is that whole front section is an easement, and the purpose of the easement is to buffer the town from an industrial look. So getting rid of that easement, there's no other place that we can put it that would buffer the town. So the purpose of the easement...
You had a reason somewhere, right?
Yeah.
You had one at some point.
On the registry, they took a copy.
Yeah, no, that's one.
Do we have the, oh, you told me I could have that printed at the...
Yeah, yeah, sure.
Yeah, I'll send it in and I'll have it by the next meeting.
Um, did you get that motion, Danielle?
We didn't even second it or anything.
Yeah, no, I just wanna make sure she got it before we second it.
I'll manage. Don't worry.
Yeah, I can talk to you too. Moved and seconded to, uh, send their response to Walmart, uh, telling them that, um, their questions will not be entertained until we have a full application of the site plan review.
Perfect.
Network.
Some of...
Moved and seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The ayes have it. Thank you. Wow, this is one of the latest meetings we've had, isn't it?
Uh, just in regards to the minutes, uh, when I was reading through them, we had an awful lot of questions that even Joe Braga was bringing up about, uh, the condemning of the old Cumberland Farms. Just needs to take the plywood down and get in there and take a look and get at it. Now we don't have a building inspector to even stop that forward, you know, as we may mention in, in the minutes, you know, what's, what's the process of doing that? So we can either force Cumberland Farms to take the building down or, or, or what? So now, where are we?
Yeah, good question. Mr. Hopkins had thought that he could provide us with a plan appropriate too, and I don't believe he was able to do that. Um, what, maybe...
We want to try to get the ball rolling. I'd love to see it get going. Sick of looking at that building.
I think we can discuss it with the new interim building commissioner when he's up and running.
Yeah, but he did say, Joe did say he was gonna...
He did not.
Take, okay, he was gonna take the plywood down, get in there, take a couple pictures, just go, you know?
Um, he did not.
Okay, I didn't know, know that for a fact.
Are we looking for a new, uh, building inspector? Has it been published or posted or?
They, they have now actually posted it again.
Yeah, they had to lift the firing freeze on it. I mean, the hiring freeze on it.
There's no freeze on fire.
Somebody's gonna have to log.
I'm tired.
Chris, I, I know you wanna get out of here, but one last question, cause I've seen the project tonight. We already have one going next to Dunkin' Donuts, bulk, uh, storage of landscape materials. I know there's a big problem going on in, uh, New England. One of the bins was labeled compost. Uh, Maine's already banned it, all, all compost and biosolids. It is still sold in mass around places. Uh, the processing facilities, a lot of the biosol, the sludge sewage goes up to Maine and other places, gets processed and shipped back to mass as compost. Uh, I know mass officials now visit Maine and they might be putting bills in to also 12 other states to ban all biosolids used in compost in the state of Mass. Uh, the specification sheets for one of the popular products that comes back to Mass and gets sold in some places and sells short, says occupied, for bulk storage, occupied buildings other than those owned by the site owner operating will be 500-foot distance. Uh, public roadways or budding property boundaries will be stored 100 feet from boundaries.
Yeah, but these are all maybe though, right? It's all up in the air.
No, it's written in the spec sheets on use of them, if it has biosolids.
And Maine, you mean?
Compost. Is that something Brennan, the site, the town engineer would look when he looks at the plans?
That would be something we'd have to ask him to be sure.
If he sees one labeled as compost, is it?
It would be something that would come up.
Yeah, it would come up.
Yeah, it has to comply with all, uh, current zoning bylaws, state and local.
Is some places a stop to stay away from it now? They even advertise, we don't use biosols, but then it's still being sold other places right now. It's significantly affecting towns' well water and stuff cause it runs off?
Well, they use it in mixes too, for coloring and all kinds of stuff. Um, there's all kinds of things that are problematic now. Reprocessing the asphalt has become an issue. I just dealt with that myself at a facility. It's not allowed in most places because of the runoff. And so, yeah.
It's loaded with PFAS and now it's, it's going and shutting downtown wells cause it's running off from these composes and stuff. So I just noticed it was on that plan. I didn't know if that's something he reviews.
Uh, we'll, we'll double check just to make sure, but I'm pretty sure he does.
Well, not to drop off the ball, I don't know if you entertain a motion on contacting the new building commissioner when he, if and when, if it's tomorrow, Monday or whatever. Cause it, it really, I'd like to get the ball rolling.
I'd also like to entertain a motion to contact...
Would you like to get a formal motion?
Yes, yes, but in addition to that, I'd like to reach out to the owners of the property too and ask them if they would send a representative. Yeah, well, we held off because, uh, the building inspector was going to intervene and try to initiate something. But at the very least, we can ask for someone to represent that, the owners to come in and we have some questions. They may not show up, but we can ask them.
Okay.
Unless anybody has a problem, I can't see why.
That's great.
Um, the corner of Indian Path and Plymouth Street, I don't know the number, but the used car lot take, has taken down trees and starting to do some like move in a dirt and everything. And I was wondering what was going on over there, cause some of it is very close to conservation. It looks nice. I just wanna see...
The conservation line is like three foot from the side of the building over there.
Yeah.
And the other thing is, I don't know if he's exceeded his amount of cars allowed of that lot, but that's...
I was just curious about what was going on over there. I mean, I, it's nothing personal, just all of a sudden the huge tree is gone and...
Here's where it gets a little crazy. Those kinds of things like amount of cars and everything is not necessarily in the zoning bylaws. It's in the rules and regulations.
Yeah.
That's enforceable by the selectmen.
Yeah.
And, you know...
Yeah, selectmen determine the number of cars that are allowed on a permit.
I remember when Charlie was counting the ones down at Pete's.
Charlie was taking care of all of that stuff. Of course, now we have, you know, everybody's in, you know, it's hard to get...
Welcome to Massachusetts.
Yeah, I know. But, but we can certainly, you know, reach out to the new building official and then he can maybe pass it.
Do you wanna leave it just as that, what you wanted in the form of a motion?
I think a motion, uh, to ask the building inspector of the, to, uh...
Look into...
Investigate the property at, uh, I don't remember the street number, but...
The old Cumberland Farms location?
Yeah, at 58106, the abandoned structure at 58106.
To include a notification of the property owners.
Well, we can do that. I mean, we can do that in conjunction with everybody else he's doing, but I think the plan would should send a letter to, yeah.
Let's see what the building inspector's gonna want.
Yeah, he might think it's, it's his jurisdiction, so.
I mean, we're really not enforcing...
We're not enforcing, we're just asking...
Under command and...
To come in and talk to us about any plan.
For planning purposes.
Yeah, right, exactly.
Oh, good.
Can we also have the new building inspector go over and see what's happening on the corner of Indian Path and 106?
Um...
And is there a conservation application?
There's a conservation agent. I think you should probably do that, ask the conservation agent to...
Cool. All right, how are you?
All right, do, do we want motions on that?
Oh, we want, we put, we had a motion to put the minutes up for, for the next meeting?
Yes.
You had that? You did that?